I'd like to call the order, the meeting of the Board of Trustees of Pasadena Community College District, meeting number 23. And ask Ms. Thompson, who spells her name incorrectly, to please call a roll.
Mr. Thompson?
I am here.
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
President?
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Good. Okay. Is there anybody who wishes to address the board with respect to closed session items? We will be addressing Government Code Section 54957.6, Labor Negotiations with Dean Ingledinger. Government Code Section 54957.6, Negotiation with Unrepresented Employees. Management Association, Mr. Ingledinger again. Government Code Section 54957.6, Negotiation Unrepresented Employee, Vice President and our negotiator was Dr. Rocha. Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Appointment, Vice President. And Government Code Section 54956.9B, Conference with Legal Counsel regarding anticipated litigation to separate matters. Anybody who wishes to address us on any of the closed session items? Okay, the Board of Trustees are back in session. There are no reportable items from our closed session discussions. So let's go back to the agenda. And the first item on here is the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's see. Dr. Sugamoto, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
It would be my pleasure. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Anybody wishing to address the board on something that is not on our agenda? Okay. Introductions and announcements. Ms. Brown, any introductions or announcements?
No.
Dr. Mann?
I don't have any introductions, but I do have an announcement. I've been invited to serve on the site visit for the accreditation of Moore Park College on October 11th through the 14th, and have accepted this invitation, thinking going in and learning more about the process will be helpful. And because of that, I will also go to training on the accreditation process on September the 8th, which is not a board meeting night. So neither one of these involve missing boards.
Okay. Mr. Baum?
My only announcement actually is related to my other hat that University of Southern California welcomed a new president this week, Dr. Max Nikias. And so, look forward to bringing him to PCC and showing him all the great things that...
Rumor has it that USC may also get a football coach and a football team, isn't it? Any truth to that rumor?
Absolutely.
Mr. Martin?
None, thank you.
Mr. Peck?
Just one introduction. We have Ashley Jackson, the Vice President for Cultural Diversity, sitting in Jamie's spot just for today because Jamie is away for the week, and so she's joining us for the meeting today.
I have no announcements or introductions. Dr. Rocha?
No report. I'll save it for my formal report.
Okay. Anybody else have an announcement or introduction you want to make? Okay. Then let's move to election to fill Board of Trustees Officer Vacancies, Discussion with Possible Action. Ms. Dowell, do you have anything to comment on with respect to this?
There is a vacancy in the Office of President of the Board that was created by the resignation at the last, after the last meeting of Dr. Bradbury Wang, who not only left the Board, but left the Office of President of the Board. The Board needs to fill that vacancy. And if, in the course of filling that vacancy, another vacancy in an office of the President, of the Board opens up, then the Board should move to a second action item to fill that vacancy. Should that vacancy create another vacancy, then the Board should move again. So the Board has before it the potential of three action items tonight and a minimum of one on this, on this agenda item. I do want it to be clear that this is not an organizational meeting of the Board. The Board's organizational meeting occurs in December of each year, and that is the only organizational meeting that it has. Rather, the Board is simply acting as it must, under the code and under its own bylaws, to fill the existing vacancy and any vacancies that are created by the domino effect.
Any questions of counsel or discussion? Mr. Baum?
I'd like to move to nominate Mr. Thompson to be the President of the Board of Trustees to fill the vacancy left by Dr. Bradbury Wang.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Should I leave the room and...
We'll put our heads down.
Any, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. I'm delighted to be able to serve in this position and look forward to working with all of you for the betterment of PCC. So, thank you. Any other motions, Dr. Mann?
President Thompson, you now need to make, somebody needs to make another motion because you have another vacancy.
Okay. My hand's up.
Dr. Mann?
Yes, I would like to move to nominate Mr. Baum for Vice President of the Board.
Is there a second to that nomination?
Second.
Is there any other nominations? Okay. All in favor of the nomination, please say aye.
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 All opposed? And motion carries. We've got one more domino effect here, so we have, need to fill the position of clerk of the, of the Board. Dr. Mann?
I would like to move to nominate John Martin for the position of clerk of the Board.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Been moved and seconded. Any other nominations? Okay. All in favor of the motion to elect Mr. Martin as clerk of the Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Congratulations. Thank you very much. Okay.
I have one point, too. I just, asking the administration is customary to put out a, an announcement of the new officers of the Board, and I hope that that will be done to the, to the public.
Just remember our student advisory vote as we go through the meeting.
I'm sorry. You're, you're right. I, I promised only to do better.
Now that you're a real president.
Yeah. My apologies. I totally forgot about that, so...
Do you want to record a vote?
I assume you're, do you want to record your advisory votes?
Okay. I'll retroactively cast three yes advisory votes.
Thank you.
I will move next, my chair.
Okay. The next item is the appointment process for the trustee for Area 5.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
I have another, I have another point on this. It is our custom, I don't know, we took this up last time. It is our custom to actually elect the Secretary of the Board. Do we do that? We did not do that the last meeting, neither. Our bylaws actually, although they say in there in one place that the, the President of the College is the Board Secretary, it also indicates, I think, that we elect the Secretary. And we have always done that. So, as, as the Chair of the Policy part of that committee, I'd be glad to make our policy consistent, but I think it might be a good idea, until we do that, to go ahead and elect the Secretary because we do not have the elected Secretary.
Well, let's may, first of all, may please get the advice of counsel, and then we can address that issue.
Mr. Thompson, members of the Board, Dr. Rocha, as I advised you last time, I do believe that by virtue of, of the Board's bylaws and the contract, that Dr. Rocha assumes the Office of Secretary. But there's certainly no impediment to the Board having a vote to affirm that. And as I understand it, it has been your practice in your organizational meetings to do so. You do now have a new Secretary of the Board. And there will certainly, you won't, in my view, do any legal violence to anything by having such an affirming vote.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to move that we elect Dr. Rocha, Mark Rocha, as Secretary of the Board.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I'd just say, I like the ceremonial and ritual aspect of that, so that the Board makes another affirmative vote in support of Dr. Rocha's service to the district. So, I'm pleased to do that, even though it is not necessarily legally required.
Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Now, let's move to the appointment process for the trustee, Area 5, Discussion with Possible Action. This is the vacancy created by the resignation of Dr. Hillary Bradbury Wang. Dr. Rocha, is you or Ms. Dowell have...
We have a presentation from General Counsel.
Excellent.
May I request a little technical assistance? I think there's one more button that has to be hit. Members of the Board, thank you. Members of the Board, President Thompson, President Rocha. At your board meeting last, the Board reached the conclusion, thank you. I know what I need to do. Just a second. Are we on? At the board meeting last, the Board concluded that rather than calling an election, that it would go through an appointment process to appoint a trustee to fill the vacancy left by trustee Bradbury Wang's departure. At that board meeting also, the Board concluded, or discussed at least, that the selection process it would follow would probably, or should probably track the recommendations from the California Community College League. So what I have done then is to take the language of the Community College League's paper, which is explanatory, and which I believe was available at the last board meeting, and turn it into a procedure that is in, it's then directory, but it's essentially the same process. We, partly because of my own trial schedule, I was only able to get this to Dr. Rocha on Monday. What I have, am proposing to do tonight is, you have it up on the screen here, and I believe copies have been made available to members of the Board, and I want to go through with you what I have developed. In a couple of places, the Board will need to exercise some discretion about how the procedure is going to work. And you'll know when we've gotten to those spots because they will be highlighted in yellow on the screen. I have my computer here in front of me, and I will make the corrections as we go, so that by the end of our time together this evening, we will have a finished document, which then I would, which would then be before the Board for an action item. I don't know, Mr. Thompson, whether you have any members of the public who wish to speak to this item, but if there are, I would like to ask them to wait until I've made my presentation, so that they will have had an opportunity to hear it, too, and then they can make whatever suggestions or advocacy to you that they wish. So if there are no questions, before I begin, let me begin by explaining to you what you have before you on the screen. Any questions for members of the Board?
No, I think you may proceed.
Okay. The first paragraph here is an introductory paragraph, and it is a combination of some language from the League and the very first sentence, which is derived from your board bylaw, your board bylaw 1024. I thought that it was important for this process to begin with the Board's own language as it exists in your bylaw. The, there, we will, I have two documents, I'm going to be flipping back and forth between them, because there, I have proposing some appendices that are the forms of, of documents that need to be used. And one of my appendices is Appendix 6, which is the proposed schedule. And so what we have here simply is a requirement that the process adhere to the schedule set out in Appendix 6, and we will go through that schedule, and the Board can make such changes as it may deem necessary.
Do we have that Appendix 6?
I just looked at it, but I've lost it.
This ends with Appendix 5.
Does it end with Appendix 5? There should be a Appendix 6.
I got 6.
You got 6? Okay. Well, we, 6 will be on the screen. So you will be able, we'll have 6 to look at.
Although some of us are, the way we're sitting, cannot see the screen.
Can't see the screen? Can you see it over this way?
Well, from you, from your place you can, but there's certain places you can't. But that's neither here nor there. Oh, here it is. You know what? It's, and mine is in the middle.
Is it, did it?
It's like page 3. It's just not stapled correctly.
Okay.
Okay.
At the outset of this process, the busiest office on campus will, will actually be the office of the President of the College, which will be charged with the preliminary steps in beginning this process. That, the first thing that will happen is the legally required posting of the vacancy in three places in the district. I added the word prominent to make it clear that we, these will be posted in very public places throughout the district, so that members of the public can become informed about the possibility of the vacancy. The law also requires that a notice be published at least once in a newspaper of general circulation in the district. The announcement will be in the form of Appendix 1. So I've clicked, I've switched to Appendix 1. The text that I have included here is the text of the proposed announcement that the League has created. There are a couple of matters that will need to be customized. For example, the date of the first board meeting that the trustee will serve at, the size of the district, I didn't have that information. But the information about the vacancy that is included here is vac, is information that has been recommended by the League. I didn't do any editorializing of here.
So should we just, should we read this Appendix 1, since it's the first time we're seeing it?
Sure.
So we, to make sure we're all...
And, and I particularly want, okay. I've put on the screen particularly the qualifications that you should include in your announcement, so that people will understand the role of a trustee.
While people are reading, I'm just going to ask the staff, when they post the announcement in three places in the district, that those three places not only be in the district, but be in trustee Area 5.
In trustee Area 5. Yes.
That's a little bit of common sense there, but, so I don't think we have to change anything.
That's a good, that's a good point, Mr. Martin. The law simply says three places in the district, but since trustees in the Pasadena Area Community College District are elected by trustee Area, it makes most sense for them to be in trustee Area 5.
And in fairness, we know that trustee Area 5 is comprised of several different cities, and so, again, spread them out, right? Over the cities that it's comprised of.
Yeah. And, and that, it will be important to think about that in the context of the newspaper of general circulation as well.
Could we change that, then?
Well, let me just ask, is, are there only three municipalities in District 5? I mean, I know it's Temple City, South Pasadena, and San Marino. Are any, are there any other municipalities in that district?
There might be an incorporated area.
Well, Dr. Mann, I'm confident that we don't really need to change any writings, or I think the staff is on top of it, and they'll...
I can do it.
Okay. The only thing I was going to suggest, we just say at least three places, rather than, rather than three. So if there's somewhere else, then we just go ahead and do it.
And then I just want to put on the table whether we, it says at least one newspaper of general circulation. Given the makeup of the district, should we also direct, in addition, say, to one paper, should we suggest that it also be listed in, in papers that serve various ethnic communities, whether the African-American community, the Asian-American community, or the Latino community as well? I just wanted to put that out there.
Mr. Mart, Mr. Thompson?
Yes, right.
I, the English professor, would like to just make a couple of grammatical changes here. If we say the presidential cause notices the vacancy to be published in newspapers, and not in a newspaper of general circulation in the district, comma, including those serving ethnic communities, and then the other one to say in at least three places, I think this would, this would make it a much stronger...
I've got the at least three places. We can, the, what the law says is a newspaper of general circulation. If we change it to newspapers, we suddenly loop in a lot of news. It could be a lot of newspapers. So would you...
I don't think we need to change.
Okay. So as long as, as long as we know we're going to go beyond this?
Mr. Martin?
I don't know that we have to debate this topic to that level. I think we've said it as board members and with concurrence, kind of, and I'm sure the staff gets it, and I'm sure they're going to do it.
Okay.
So I don't know that we have to hit it with a sledgehammer. I think we can let it go and keep it to whatever the law says, and it'll be done.
Well, and, and some of those issues, or some of those concerns may also be addressed in the, in Section 2, which is recruitment of candidates and information for candidates. And that directs the College President to recruit qualified candidates to apply for the vacancy by doing all of the following. And that includes sending announcements to people who might know, might be, or know of good potential board members, solicit names of good potential candidates from community leaders and college organizations. So the, the President's Office should actively be sending information out into the community to let potential candidates know of the availability of the vacancy.
Can I just ask, does the President have a plan to actually do that? To reach out?
Yeah, in fact, we were awaiting the presentation, you know, to make sure that it was out, since there are some other decision points we have to make. And I'll be completing the operationalizing of this tomorrow with staff, and we'll send the proposed operation plan to the officers tomorrow.
Could you send the proposed operational plan to all the board members?
Be happy to.
One of the, now I'm looking at Appendix 2, and this includes the text of a letter, a cover letter to be sent to any person who expresses an interest to the President's Office, explaining the process, enclosing the schedule, and providing the information about what needs to be provided by any person interested in applying for the position.
Is Dr. Rocha to be the person to be contacted, if there are questions?
Yes.
We've already received nine resumes. I've instructed Mary Thompson to keep a confidential file. We've received nine resumes and a number of recommendations, so Mary is keeping those in a confidential file until the deadline. Hand them over to you.
The one other item I would recommend being included is that Office of Public Affairs has a nice one-page fact sheet about the district, and I, I think that would be helpful, so that people have...
Right.
...basic facts about the district.
And the other thing that, that we, the League recommends, and that I have included here, is that that information would also include information about the role of being a board member, so that people understand what in fact is the role of a board member, and how it is different from being an employee or being a community advocate for a particular point of view.
That's a, that's a very good idea. And there's a brochure that the League, is that what you're talking about? That League provides, or a pre-printed brochure?
Yep. Look at the fourth, fourth bullet.
She's got it up.
Okay. Any questions about the letter? Other questions, I should say? Okay, please continue on.
Okay. So then we get to the information that we need to get from the applicants. And the, this will, this is set out in the letter, and this will be what we are asking applicants to provide. A letter of interest, a cover letter, a letter of interest, the application form at Appendix 3, which we'll look at in a minute, a resume, including a community service and leadership, because these are the kinds of qualities that you will be looking for in making a determination who would best serve the Board. And a questionnaire that's contained in Appendix 4. So now let me close, switch over here. And Appendix 3 is the application form. This is a, this is my version of the form that's recommended by the League. We would ask for name, home address, occupation, business contact, education information, employment history, public and community service. We need to know whether we are applicants, are employees, currently employees of the district or not. We'll talk about that in a minute. But that is information that you need to have as you're going forward. And the other eligibility requirements. And...
Any questions with respect to the application form?
Just one point of clarification.
Yeah.
As someone who's been through the ambiguity of this process, when it says that you must be a resident and a registered voter, is it implied then that you must be a registered voter in that district?
Yes.
Or do you, so, does it, right now, it just reads...
Because you have to be, and, and the reason for that is because you have to be a resident of the district. If you were, say, a registered voter in Torrance, then the circumstantial evidence would suggest to me that you reside in Torrance.
Right. So should it, should it then read that you must be a resident and registered voter in the district, as opposed to just a resident and also a registered voter?
It could be. I think the, the requirement that they be a resident is, is really the requirement that we're getting at. Certainly, we would look at somebody who appeared to be a registered voter in Torrance.
Sure.
And say, wait a minute, you know, where do you live? And indeed, as other members of the Board are aware, I, one of the most common political challenges that face public agencies are, are allegations that arise sometimes that a person who is serving in an elected capacity doesn't really live in the area. They don't live in the city, or they don't live in the...
That's a very timely comment, in today's news.
Yeah. So, it does come up a lot.
Should, should it be assumed that anybody who submits an application for the President is submitting it to the pub, for public review?
Yes.
Yes.
So, yes, this is not like an application for, for employment. I thank you for asking me that, because I intended to, to remind you of it. It startles people sometimes, and it is important for people to understand that as, as people who ran for office, you know that all of the information that you submitted was public information when you submitted it for, for purposes of the ballot and campaigning and every, campaign statements and everything. And the same is true here. There, it is not like somebody applying for a job.
Thank you.
Are there questions with respect to the, the application form? If not, let's move on then to the next.
I want to, I want to pause for a moment on the questionnaire. These are a series of questions that the League recommends that applicants for the position respond to in, in filing their application. And I want the board members to have an opportunity to look at them. If you have concerns about any of them, questions about any of them, if there's something else you want to ask on the questionnaire, this would be the time to have that conversation.
Is there any minimum number of letters of reference? Is that just up to the applicant?
No. That's up to the applicant.
Are there questions of counsel?
I did, I did accept the League's recommendation that the maximum amount of material that be, be submitted is 10 pages, because otherwise it gets to be a lot to go through.
Thank you.
So, so that's the reason for that.
Okay.
And I would suggest we put a number of letters of reference. Oh, but you said max amount of material. Does that put the letters of reference?
Yes.
Right. So...
Try to, try to keep it down to a manageable amount of...
Yes, sir.
Could we go back for a minute to this thing about being a registered voter?
Sure.
You know, when, when you filed or run for an office, you go down to the registrar's office, or you file, and then they check. Someone down there checks to see if you're a registered voter. What happens if a person says they are a registered voter? What happens if a person says they are a registered voter? We select them and then come to find out they aren't a registered voter. Is there any way we can ask the registrar to check their status rather than ask, you know, Mrs. Thompson or the president to check their status?
I think that's probably a question that the president's office should pose to the registrar's office. In a minute, I want to talk about the initial screening process, and I think this is germane to that. But I believe that we need to find out from the registrar's office if they're willing to assist us in that, and I assume that they would be because it is a condition of holding the office. It's a minimum condition.
Right, because I think the point that Nolan brought out is really very, particularly if you're a student, a lot of students might live in the district, but they might still be registered, you know, in Minnesota.
Right.
And they are a registered voter, so I...
And where you're registered is an indicia of residency. It's not an insurmountable, I mean, it's not an irrebuttable indicia, but it's pretty strong. If you're not registered to vote where you say you live, there's a very strong presumption that you don't.
Okay, that we'll bring up later then, okay?
Maybe the simplest thing is just to change the wording of the application and say, must be a resident and registered voter in the district.
Right. I think that would make it much clearer.
Agreed.
Other questions with respect to the questionnaire? Okay, please continue.
Oh, sorry, one thing on the questionnaire. I don't know how final of a draft this is, but the fourth one down, describe other community involvement, that just strikes me as something that shouldn't have a question mark at the end.
Pardon me?
Yes.
What did you say?
On the fourth one, it should be a period, because it says describe, and there's a question mark there.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
That's okay, no, this is...
Good reading.
This is what, this is an opportunity to do. Thank you. Okay. Now...
And I would...
Here is, this is going to go to, I think, to Dr. Mansma's recent question. The applications will then be reviewed by the college president or his designee to determine which applicants meet the legal requirements for membership on the board. And I included here what the legal requirements for membership on the board are, so that anybody, in case there are any questions. First, candidates must be, and these come from the Education Code, so that's why I cited Education Code Section 72103. Candidates must be at least 18 years old. They must be citizens of the United States and of the state of California. And that goes to the person who is a resident of Minnesota. That person is not a citizen of California. They must be residents of Trustee Area 5, and we're going to be verifying addresses. In part because, and I suspect this may be one of the most significant screens that the president's office will have to do, because it's entirely possible that you will have very earnest, sincere candidates who don't necessarily know what the boundary areas of Trustee Area 5 are, or miss the fact that they have to live in Trustee Area 5. And that is a requirement for this. They must not be disqualified from holding office by any provision of the Constitution or laws of California.
This doesn't say they have to be a registered voter.
But we could still make that a...
I can add that.
But it's not in here.
No, she's right, it's not in here.
Yes, it needs to be added.
We can add it. Not a problem.
Of the district, yeah.
Of the trustee area of the district.
Yeah, of the trustee area. Must be a registered voter in Trustee Area 5, probably I should say.
One issue we have to decide is how we want to have these reviewed.
That's coming.
I have a couple of...
Yes, okay.
On the second bullet point, your only states don't have citizens, you're a citizen of the United States and a resident of the state of California.
I think that's an awful wording, too, Mr. Baum. I agree. That's how it's in the code, so that's why I picked it up that way.
That's interesting, okay. I know Texas would like to have its own citizenship.
I'm sure that you, they do.
I believe it is the legislature's way of saying you must be a resident of California.
And is this the same on Bullet 4, provision of the Constitution or law of California, or, that seemed awkward, like the law of California?
Well, what that it goes to is whether you have, for any reason, been disenfranchised under the Constitution or the laws of California.
So it'd be laws of California, or law of California?
It can be laws if you like. Again, the code says law.
Oh, it does? So this matches the exact phrase of the code?
This matches the code, yeah.
Okay.
But I'm not...
No, if it matches the code...
If it matches the code, as you...
Now, the last...
Are there other questions?
I'm sorry, I want to point out the last...
Other questions before you move on? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
The last bullet point to you. And I did expand this one, or I rewrote the statute here a little bit, because I wanted people to be sure to understand it. Candidates who are current district employees must resign before being sworn into office. If the employee does not resign, the employment will automatically terminate when the person is sworn into office. So far, so good. Okay? Everybody understands that one. What follows is what I tried to recast into more plain English. The only exception is for a person whose usual occupation is other than teaching and who is currently teaching no more than one course in the subject matter of his or her occupation. Such a person may complete that course, but no future employment will be possible.
It's for an adjunct faculty member.
Right. If you have an adjunct faculty member who runs for or seeks appointment to the board and is appointed to the board, and it's the middle of the semester, the legislature has concluded they can finish the course so that the students are not damaged by the loss of their professor. But once that employment is over, any new employment is a new contract of employment. And as the members of the board know, there can be no contract between the district and a board member. I wanted to be very clear to the members of the board, members of the public. The screening that will be done by the president's office is proposed only to screen for these basic legal requirements. The president's office is not going to be screening for good candidates or not good candidates. No qualitative screening, and is not going to be usurping the discretion of the board in that respect at all. It's only going to be winnowing out anyone who has applied who could not, as a matter of law, be appointed.
They're just making certain they meet the legal requirements for holding the office.
Correct. Then we get to the criteria, and this is where the board will come in. And this is the first substantive decision that will be before the board. Applicants who have met the legal requirement will then, their applications will then be reviewed, and you have a choice. You can either appoint an ad hoc committee of the board to go through this, what would really be the initial qualitative screening, the second screening, to determine which candidates should be forwarded to the board to make a public presentation, or the board, sitting as a committee of the whole, could do it. The League doesn't recommend any particular choice to you, and as a practical matter, neither do I. There are pros and cons to proceeding in either fashion. The committee of the whole may be more efficient, it may be, I mean, an ad hoc committee may be more efficient, it may be easier to coordinate the schedules of three members of the board than six members of the board, but it would mean that not all six members of the board would be seeing every application. Whereas if you operate as a committee of the whole, all six members will see every application.
One question for you. Would the ad hoc committee be governed by the Brown Act and be public meetings?
No.
That's if we only put three people, but if we put four people on it, they would...
If you make it a committee of a quorum of the board, then it would, yes. As you can see, I've got three little blanks for three little trustee names.
Right.
And so it would be an ad hoc committee of less than a quorum of the board, which, under the Brown Act, is not required to comply with the Brown Act.
Mr. Baum?
So in the interests of transparency, I would recommend that we review the applications during a board meeting as a committee of the whole.
I think, if you're going to do that, I think you're going to have to have a special meeting. I think we will be, let's assume, if we already have nine applications or nine people have indicated an interest, let's assume we get 15 or 20 total, and they all meet the legal requirements. I think we're probably not going to be able to do that at a regular board meeting, but we can decide that as we go down the road, but that's one factor. Other questions or comments, or?
Well, I would, you know, as an alternative, we could have an ad hoc committee, and we could still have open meetings. Could we not, nothing says an ad hoc committee cannot have an open meeting.
That's true.
And the other board members could attend if they wanted to?
Yes.
That they could do that, but then you wouldn't have to schedule the whole, you wouldn't have to schedule the whole board.
Right. Back, any comments or thoughts? John, Martin?
Well, you don't have to make this decision right now, but you'll need to make it before you adopt these procedures tonight. So we can come back to it, once, from a parliamentary standpoint, we can come back to this when there's a motion on the floor.
I have a question that I think I'd like to add to the questionnaire, if we can retro. I would like to ask all the candidates if they're interested, if they, if their current plans include running for the position again when the seat is open, when it's an elected And the reason I'd like to add that question to the questionnaire is because at the moment I can foresee, and it, well, maybe I better not say why, because that would tip the hat.
Well, you could certainly ask that question at a public meeting.
You can ask that question in a public meeting. It's probably information that members of the public would be interested in having. May I explain to you what my initial concern is about putting it in the questionnaire, particularly as you're screening through? The members of the public have the right to, have constitutional right, or recognized constitutional right, to elect such candidates as they choose. And it is, I think, problematic if you ask someone to make them, to state that they're going to be a candidate or not be a candidate, or promise not to be a candidate for something, at least in the initial screening. I just have a visceral concern.
Okay, I can withdraw, I'm fine.
Okay. Please proceed then, Mary.
Okay.
One question I do have on that. Do you have to publish the interview questions before the interviews?
The recommendation from the League is that you do so, and so when we get to the interview questions, we'll talk about that.
So now I'm back on your question. And the only advantage I can see to a smaller committee is, I'm thinking of the people that have submitted these applications, and it seems like the more public it is, you're making it difficult to talk about different characteristics of different people. You know, I think I'd be a little more, I'm trying not to, I don't want to embarrass somebody, so by saying this or that about somebody based on the resumes would there create a discomfort. Or maybe it works better the other way. I'm just trying to think through that, as opposed to, you know, generally personnel issues are, try to show a great deal of respect for the individuals.
Well, again, it's important to remember that this is not a personnel decision.
It's not a personnel decision.
It's not a personnel decision, but there's obviously personnel involved here, so, okay. Well...
I think, I've been through this experience on the city council here in Pasadena.
So what's your wisdom?
We actually put the final two candidates through a public presentation, asked them questions, and gave them kind of a scenario to address and provide answers to and things like that. So my feeling, my experience certainly, is that if you're willing to apply for a public office, then you're open to the public, and you've got to be ready to answer whatever questions you get asked. So...
Okay.
But, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's a good lead-in to the next part. And once, and the board will need to decide later on this evening, if not now, when you have this before you as a proper motion, whether you're going to have the screening done by an ad hoc committee, if it's going to be a committee that is composed of a quorum, or if you're going to sit as a committee of the whole. But the selection of the final candidate will include consideration of, and when I say the selection of final candidate to be reviewed, that is to be forwarded clearly to the entire board for final action, shall include consideration of the following criteria. And again, these are criteria recommended by the League. I have not exercised any editorial or political discretion over this. But these are the kinds of qualities that the League recommendations suggest that the board members screen the candidates for.
Which bullet point are you on?
I'm on the bullet points generally that appear on page four.
Oh, okay.
A quick question for clarification. Just, procedurally, when we write, the selection of final candidates to review by the board shall include the following criteria, is that to say this, these are the only criteria that we're looking at, or should we say, like, at minimum, we'll include these criteria?
Well, that's an interesting linguistic question. Should we say shall include but not be limited to? It's a lot of qualities.
A whole lot of qualities.
I just worry that if something were to fall outside of this realm that we, I don't know that it would limit us necessarily.
They're so all-inclusive, it's hard for me to understand, to see anything that might fall outside of them. But even someone who with stellar qualities that fall outside what is represented here, what the board needs to decide is, do you agree that these are qualities that you want to be screened for?
Yeah, the wording here would not exclude considering other criteria.
It doesn't exclude non-traditional persons, but it does emphasize the need for any person who wants to fill such an important public role to demonstrate some qualities.
Thompson?
Yes.
I have almost the other concern. If you look at all these qualities, and they were limiting the people to 10 pages, including two or three letters of recommendation, I think it's going to be difficult for any candidate to demonstrate all these, that they meet all these criteria, which I assume is what a person will do in their letter, unless they have really strong writing skills. And maybe that's, so that's the underlying, I mean, that's, these are, it's an awful lot of things. Although I know this is based on best practice, it's still an awful lot.
There's no question that it's a public service wish list.
It certainly is, yeah.
But as I looked at it, there wasn't anything that I felt I would want to take off.
I don't, I mean, this is going to be a, well, maybe not a public process, but it's certainly going to be an oral process, a verbal process, and so people can address issues, I suppose, during the screening interviews that they may feel that they haven't had a chance to adequately explain in the 10 pages that they give, but Jeanette raises a very good point. It's, but I would hate to double the number of pages, because then we're just...
No, no.
Add more and more to this.
That sort of leads then to the next point, where you see the yellow highlighting here. Whether you appoint an ad hoc committee or a committee of the whole, the board will receive recommendations from that committee, the ad hoc committee or the committee of the whole, that will go to the board itself to consider. And the board may wish to establish a minimum or maximum number of candidates that will be forwarded to it. If you wind up with 25 candidates who meet the minimum legal requirements, then the committee will review those 25 candidates. Does the board want all 25 candidates to come before it itself?
No.
If not, do, would the board prefer to have a minimum number? That's hard to establish when you don't know how many applicants you're going to get. Do you want to establish a maximum number? I had an experience, I mean, like Mr. Thompson and Dr. Rocha, I have gone through this, too. And I remember a board one time that really couldn't reach agreement on how many were going to come forward, and they interviewed everybody. It took three full days, the board members having to give up their entire time. The board members having to give up their entire time to go through the interviews. They interviewed something like 50 people. And I, it, it burns you out. But it's, it's at the discretion of the board. You could, I, I mean, I'll throw out a number that I think is manageable, but you can go up or down from it. That would be nine.
Nine?
Nine, which would be about as many as you could probably listen to and, and keep straight in your head. But you could have a lower number, you could have a higher number.
Jeff?
I just think to give us maximum flexibility, and I think we can talk about this, when the committee recommends, or we, we talked about the committee of the whole, but I would just say at least two candidates shall be forwarded to the, by the committee to the entire board.
I mean, that, that's a way to do it, is to say at least two, and the committee itself could recommend 10, or 15, or 20.
Right. And then we'll trust the committee will select a number that is a manageable number.
Or at least two days, three, something like that.
Well, I would just say two. At least two, and that gives us maximum.
Yeah, I think if we require ourselves to select nine, it's going to be a long process. Other questions or comments on this?
Again, I would, I would say two. I didn't say two to three.
Oh, two to three.
Okay, well.
But that's my point of.
I kind of like three myself. You know why, right?
Why don't you say at least three?
Three's good.
That's the safe.
Okay.
Okay.
Continue, are you on?
All right.
That's true. That's a good point.
So then, then we require, then we would require that each member of the board would receive and review the applications and background information of those three or more final candidates recommended by the committee. Now, I included the next because it was part of the League recommendation. Frankly, I'm not sure you need to have this step. It may be more disruptive to the flow of the process than anything else. But they recommended that a public meeting the board would meet to determine whether to interview all the eligible candidates that the committee had already screened, to interview all of the candidates recommended by the committee, or to interview even fewer than the number of candidates recommended by the committee.
Well, I think if you're going to have a committee, I mean, I think we should interview the people that they recommend.
Yeah, I would cut that whole paragraph. Just let, just trust the committee, assuming we have one.
Just do the second bullet point, just interview all the candidates recommended by the committee.
Well, you don't even need to say.
You don't, you don't need it if that's what you're going to do. And if you ultimately conclude to act as a committee of the whole.
Doesn't matter anyway.
Then you will be doing bullet two. I'm going to take out the next paragraph because it related to that.
The next paragraph goes also.
Yes. So then we get to the, the interviews with the final candidates, which will occur at a public meeting of the board. And the board can, if it chooses, sit as a committee of the whole to conduct those, to conduct those interviews, or it can sit as the board. Entirely up to you. It's really a parliamentary distinction. Sometimes, in my experience, boards feel a little, the discussion within a committee of the whole is a little more freewheeling because no action clearly is going to occur because it is a committee, but it's not required. So I gave that to you as an option. Candidates shall be interviewed. We're going to have to set an order. We could do them in alphabetical order. We could do them in an order to be determined by lot. And, but we need, the candidates need to know how that's going to happen. I would recommend that you do it by lot, so that it's truly random and no one has an advantage.
I agree with that.
And as someone whose maiden name was Williams, I would definitely agree with that.
And then the administration seems to have, have a good methodology for determining random orders of things. I think Kristol's can help us with that, or the president.
Okay, so we're doing it by lot? Is that?
Yeah, let's do it by lot.
Okay.
That's pretty easy.
Now, the next, the next thing for the board members to decide, what I, what I recommend, what I'm recommending to you, and that's right here, I should have highlighted it, is that the candidates be limited to, their presentations to three minutes. And then that members of the board ask questions of the candidate, and that they be limited in their response to your questions to one minute. That's still going to be at least 10 minutes per presentation. Or nine and a half minutes, because there are only six board members. One thing that the board should consider, given your time constraints, do you, you want to limit, limit each board member to one question? Want to permit board members to ask, each ask more than one question? These are at your discretion.
One thing I'd like to ask the administration, one of the things we've, we've asked about is, maybe this will at least prompt us to get a programmable timer, since that timer only calculates to five minutes. And it would be good to have something that, I'd like a visible timer for, for the folks to, to do.
Is this something we have to decide this evening as to?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Thompson, I, I would suggest that we, that we limit, that we say that they can make a presentation of five minutes. I think 10 minutes is not really much time. This is a very important decision. Five minutes is not that long. And then I, I, I'm not in favor of limiting the time they have to answer the question or either the number of, of questions. If it, if it takes 15 or 20 minutes, that's fine with me. We're, we're, this is a very important decision that we're making. And if we have three, we have three candidates, each one takes 20 minutes, it's an hour. I mean, if we have five candidates and each one takes 20 minutes, well, it's an hour and 40 minutes. I don't think that's much time to invest in selecting someone to represent that district. So I, I, these, these, these short time limits bother me. Now, if we're going to interview 50, but
Or even 10.
Or even, okay, so we interview 10 and each one takes 10 minutes.
Yeah. I, what, what I'm getting at trustee man with the number of questions to be posed by each trustee is really essentially how many, how many sequences you're going to go through. Because I'm assuming that each board member will wish to pose the same number of questions as every other board member.
And then you have the whole point of follow-up questions. I mean, sometimes someone says something and you don't, I mean, I've gone through thousands of interviews, and you don't understand it. Can you then ask for clarification?
In my view, the answer to that question is yes.
And so then you're, then you're, then you're going down another track.
Precisely because this is not an employment interview.
It's not an employment. We don't have to ask everyone the same questions, unlimited to the same amount of time.
Ms. Brown?
Well, I think we should allow each board member a question and really focus question because sometimes we can take 10 minutes just posing the question. So we may want to be conscientious of the time after the person give their presentation. Maybe each one of us should have maybe three minutes with the individual, so we all could get an opportunity. That would be my take on that.
Mr. Martin?
I would suggest scratching the last sentence altogether. Questions shall be drawn from the list. Each board member, last two sentences, pose one question. My experience with, with this board in the superintendent's search, we worked very hard to coordinate together. I think we all have a mutual respect for what we're trying to do. If any given candidate says something, I think any member of the board ought to be able to respond to it. I think in general, the list of, you know, we've got a good list of questions that probably identify for us in the back their intentions and goals, and if they'll be a good trustee. But if something comes up that isn't on list five, I don't think we should be limited and can't raise it because it's not on five. I, I think we're trying to over prescribe in that hole, in those two sections, so.
Well, this, the appendix five, which I've put up part of here so that you can see it, goes to the question that trustee Baum asked a few minutes ago, whether the questions that would be posed in the interview would be published and provided to the candidates ahead of time so they can prepare. And, and that is the reason behind the League's recommendation that these questions be provided to the candidates ahead of time, so that they do have a fair opportunity to prepare. In my view, as I've said, it is not an employment interview, and the board members should certainly not be constrained with follow-up questions that may be suggested by the responses that you get from the candidates. I truly am, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. But I also understand the reason for publishing the base questions, at least that will be asked.
Yeah. My comments really had nothing to do with appendix five, other than to compliment them for being a good base of questions that I would forward to the candidates.
I do want to invite the board members to add to this list. If you look at it and you see something that you know you're going to want to ask people and you don't see it.
But I just don't want my hands tied that if it's not on five, I can't ask it.
Yeah, well, I
When we get there that night and something comes up, I think we have to have the freedom to be able to ask that question.
I would imagine that the most likely situation which that will occur would be a follow-up question.
And a follow-up question, right.
It's, it's, I guess I'm not, although these strike me as being far too many questions, but if we want to
Again, these are, these are the ones that the League had suggested. There's not, there, and, and I, I don't, one of the things I would not recommend, Mr. Martin, is that each board member has to pick a question, and that's the only question they get to ask, and they have to ask that of every candidate. I, I think that after you've heard the candidate's presentations, any member of the board should, if they feel the question hasn't been answered by the presentation, then be able to ask any of the questions that the candidates knew were likely to come. And you might ask the third question of one candidate and the sixth question of another candidate. Because they, they, they know to be prepared for all of them.
So it's, was, I understand that if we have these, we don't have to ask these questions. And the candidates will have seen these questions, and they might address much of this in their presentation if they can get their, their thoughts organized. So then, depending on what one candidate says, we may ask a question that's not on here, but it's appropriate as a follow-up from their, from something that they've said. So there's a lot more flexibility here than in an employment, right?
Let's, let's make some changes here, so that everybody will know what the rules are. Questions may be drawn from the list on appendix five.
Right.
Or may arise from the presentation.
From the presentation, right.
Made by each candidate. And then they know what to expect may occur.
Right. And then take off each board member may pose one question.
The last sentence.
I do want to clarify something that I, my expectation is for the chair, and to speak to Ms. Brown's point, is that I think every, and I don't, every board member should be afforded the opportunity to ask a question.
Certainly.
And, and I don't want that limited by, okay, the 10 minutes is up. Too bad, Ms. Brown, we don't have time for you to actually ask a question. So how do we ensure that flexibility?
I don't think we should put a time limit on the time for each person. I mean, we can
No.
Maybe say approximately 10 minutes or something like that. But I think your point's well taken, that if there's an interesting discussion going on that's relevant to the decision, and some board members not had a chance to ask a question, they should not be precluded from doing it.
I do want to recommend that you keep a time limit on the presentations.
Oh, yeah, right. That's, yes, I agree. I'd say no more than five minutes.
But not on the answers to the questions. I think that's what he's referring to, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
But it'll be managed in such a way that we don't spend five minutes with one presentation and 30 minutes with another.
No, I think the presentations, we should put no more than a five-minute limit on, on the presentation. The question part of it may go on for five, or may go on for 10 or whatever, but.
Mary, excuse me. When you say the presentation, are you, I'm understanding correct that the candidate for presentation and questioning?
No, just the presentation.
Okay.
They'll stand here at the podium like I am doing, and they'll make a presentation.
They'll make the presentation.
And then, when they're done, you will ask them questions.
So it's okay to keep them as long as you need up there? That's my question.
Yeah. That's, that's, I'm sensing that's what the board wants to do.
We can say at the, at the outset that, that the, the aim is, is to have each candidate take approximately 10 minutes or 15, whatever number we come up with, but make it clear that we're not necessarily going to be limited by that number. But the presentation, yes, we'll have the lights going on over there, and, and when the red light
Maybe we could add, maybe we could add at this point
So that should be changed to five.
Interview should be ex, now that's
Expected to last 15 minutes?
That's what I was going to say. Do you think that's too wordy? Expected to last approximate
Yeah, 15.
15 minutes. That'd be five minutes for presentation, 10 minutes for questions.
Right.
But that's approximately.
That's what she's saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, she's got it.
And then it's five minutes.
And change the three to five.
You want to make that five?
Yes, right.
Okay.
Now, we got a five-minute timer. I mean
That's right.
We're getting a new timer. I think Dr. Van Pelt's going to arrange for that.
We'll have to have one when we're all set to go.
But my question is, do we want to limit the, the length of responses to?
No.
So the chair will have a big responsibility.
The chair will make sure that everyone gets to ask a question. I don't think we need to put that in our process.
That, that will happen. It will also make it clear that brevity is, will be appreciated.
Yeah. It's a quality to be marked. And then we've reached the voting on the final candidate. The provisional appointment must be made by a majority, public vote of the board members at a public meeting. That each trustee's vote is to be a matter of public record, no secret ballots are allowed. Now, I realize that this becomes a little bit of a, a challenge just operationally if you have several candidates. And what I have seen done, I, I don't know what Mr. Thompson's experience with the city council was, but what I have seen done is, and what I've discussed with Dr. Rocha, is that board members will be issued paper ballots that contain the names of the candidates. And you, but they will also contain your own names. And you will vote on them and then pass them forward to the secretary, who will read each trustee's vote. And you will keep balloting, and, you know, it's similar to a nominating process at a, at a convention. You'll keep balloting until somebody has four votes. At least four votes.
That's a much more efficient way of doing it than the other way, right?
I think because, I mean, unless you only have two candidates, and even if you do only have two candidates, you may have to go through more than one ballot before you, you reach your final candidate.
Well, it has to be a public process. I mean
And it has to, yeah, it has to be a public process in there. But, but the, the thing that sometimes makes it, that makes it a little cumbersome is that each vote has to be public. So that you can't just drop them in a hat and then leave them.
But just by doing it on paper does not make it non-public.
Right, no. Because the, the announcement will be made of each trustee's vote. And then the, the rest of the language here is, is now, again, directory to the college president. Once the successful candidate has been determined, the college president must then post the fact of that selection, including certain information. And notice that the appointment has to be sent to county superintendent of schools office. I included the provision relating to the length of the appoint to the length of the appointment. Again, so that anybody who is reading these procedures will be on notice that the successful appointee will be in office until the next board election. It's different from serving out the entire term of the vacant office.
President Thompson? Yes.
Question, Mary. When, as we're getting down to the final process of, you know, voting, after the interviews, before the voting, is it possible, or, you know, at the board's discretion, to have an opportunity for a background check of the candidates?
I don't think so, Dr. Rocha. The background check, as such as it is, will occur when your office does the initial screening. And unless it turns out that a your office does the initial screening. And unless it turns out that a person is disenfranchised by operation of the law from holding office, the background of the person is irrelevant.
Okay.
What about the references? Each person's going to be citing three references, whatever number.
Whatever number they choose to give you. They may choose not to give you any.
Well, if...assuming that they give us two or three, do we have an opportunity to actually talk to those?
I think that would probably be a process undertaken by the screening committee.
Yeah.
Before you get...I mean, by the time you get to the night where the members are voting on the final candidates, any...
No, I agree. That should precede that.
Any considerations like that should be done.
Okay. Then the timeline, let's...we may take a look at that.
Yeah. So let's look at the timeline.
Is that...
I try to be as realistic, given where we are, starting with today and going forward.
We certainly want to back up from the September 15th board meeting, because that's when we really should be making the appointment.
And that's...
Unless we're going to have a special meeting.
Yeah. September 15th is the final date there.
That's the date we have to select and appoint the trustee, right?
I beg your pardon?
September 15th is the date we have to select and appoint the trustee.
September 21st is the date you have to have done it by.
Okay.
Fifteenth is our...
That gives us six days in case something goes wrong.
But you have a regularly scheduled meeting on September 15th. And that's the date I picked as...and so then I put the process between today's date and September 15th.
Are there any dates here that anybody seems troubled by? We're talking basically August 4th through the 10th, which is...we're already in the fourth as it is. Publication of vagance is required by law. Weeks 2-4, August 11th through 25. Publicized position recruit candidates, receive applications, August 25th. Final deadline for receipt of applications in the CEO's office. August 25th through 31, announce of names of applicants, distribution materials to board members for review, informational meetings with candidates organized by the college president and staff. Week 6, September 1 through 7, ad hoc committee or board committee of the whole, meeting to screen applications, select finalists. September 8, special board meeting to approve the finalists. Would we also be interviewing them at that meeting?
No, that's... No, that would be...that once you have accepted the final...once the board itself has accepted the finalists from the committee, and so you've established the universe of the people you're...and I think it's important for the board to establish the universe of people who will be interviewed.
Right.
Then I put September 13th through 15th, in case the board wants to schedule a special meeting to conduct interviews before the selection...the voting on the 15th. I assumed that the 15th is the date to vote, because you have a regularly scheduled meeting that day. But you could vote at an earlier time.
I think voting at an earlier time is probably not realistic.
And you could do the interviews on September 15th. That's why I saw the 13th to the 15th. That's the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday there.
So the question is whether we want to try to do everything on the 15th of September or have a special board meeting, either to do the interviewing or to make the...
And you don't have to decide that tonight. That's...we've got a schedule that provides for you the flexibility to set meetings as needed going forward.
Okay.
But why do we need to have a board meeting on the 8th just to approve the finalists?
You need to...I believe the board needs to accept the finalists from the committee. And because of the tightness of the timeline, assuming the committee is going to be doing its screening the previous week, I can't...I couldn't set it on the 1st, which is, I believe, the day of a regular meeting.
Do we have a meeting during the first week of September?
Yes, September 1st.
I believe it's the 1st.
The problem, too, is Labor Day is...
Labor Day is the 6th.
Yeah.
And again, the one challenge is on the 15th, which we'll be mindful of. That's also a possible date for a presidential reception celebrating the new president, too.
Yeah. We're going to have a busy, busy day.
Be a good day to do it.
I...my own personal view is that we're going to have to move this week 6 back a bit, because September 1st is a Wednesday and we're right into Labor Day weekend at that point. And the 7th is the Tuesday after, I think.
The question is, is it possible on the meeting of September 1st to actually, as a board, select the finalists that will be interviewed?
That would require the board members to...I mean, the committee of the whole or the committee, whichever, to meet between August 25th and September 1st.
No, do it at the September 1st meeting. Or...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
A day, you know, use that...since we're already going to be here that day.
Especially if the board's going to act as a committee of the whole, do it on September 1st.
I think we may as well just realize we have to have some special meetings at that time. I just don't think it's practical to think we're going through with all that.
And this schedule would allow you to seize that if you wish to. And do it on September 1st if you conclude that you want to.
Well, take us through then what we absolutely have to decide this evening.
Okay.
In terms of the timeline.
In terms of the...the timeline that I created for you has enough flexibility in it. If you adopt this timeline, then you can do things on different dates if you choose to do so without...and on September...for September 8th, I'll put possible.
But the August...if we...but the date, final date for the receipt of applications has to be decided tonight, doesn't it? You're suggesting August 25th.
Yeah, that should be decided tonight. And I felt like I had really pushed that out as far as I could. And I realize it's relatively early. But you will not have time to do what you need to do if it's later.
Right. I would recommend it be the day before our board meeting, so there's time to process it, so we can actually have those names at the board meeting on the 25th. So it'd be the 24th, so that we actually can begin knowing...
Well, Mr. Baum, if you try to have a board meeting on the 25th, the president's office is not going to have had an opportunity to screen them all.
No, not...no. But we'd have the list of names of applicants. No?
The president's office need...I mean, it may be easy. You know, maybe you'll have no applicants who are disqualified and maybe it'll be a manageable group.
Yeah. How about the Friday before?
But the president's office will need to do that.
I think you're moving it up too far. I think whether we have them on the 25th or not is not that important. I would even say make the final deadline that Friday, the 27th of August. That would be my take on it and we can move from there.
And I would just argue, since we already have nine expressions of interest, that...and we have been announcing it publicly for two weeks already, we can move this up to the 20th. Therefore, that would give us the scheduled meeting of the 25th to actually be able to do something as part of that process.
I disagree. I think we want to have...let the public have as much time as it needs or possibly can to be able to apply. I think if there's going to be some squeezing, it must be on us.
Right.
So would you like me to make the 25th or 27th?
Let's make it the 27th. It makes more sense.
That'd be my take, yeah.
I just go on the record, and I'm with Jeff, that it seems to me the 20th or the 25th. The 20th gives ample public notice. We've been saying it for two weeks. The more we can align things to natural board meetings, the better board attendance we will have. If you call a special meeting, it's going to be difficult to get a full board. And if it's really an important decision, you want as many board members in each step as you possibly can. And I think five days, under the circumstances of the announcements, we've obviously been announcing it or something's happening. We've got nine, which is more than ran when it came up for an election in that area last time. So I think the more we can accommodate the regular board meetings, the better the process will be. So I'd go on with Jeff, but if the majority decides differently, I'm...we'll make every effort to make the special meetings.
Okay. Well, I think I heard three people in favor of the 27th as the deadline. And then we can adjust these other dates from that. Did I hear correctly? Advisory person, you haven't spoken up yet?
I'm fine with either. I'm willing to work with the schedule regardless.
Okay.
I think that it's...I mean, I am personally...we're going through the same thing with Associated Students. We're opening an application to fill a position that was just created. And we've extended it because we want to give the student body in the fall semester the opportunity to apply. I think the public...the more time they have to apply for the position, the better.
Okay.
What's the first day of classes?
30th.
The 30th.
Okay. Can we agree on a final deadline for applications? I think three of us said the 27th. Is that...am I counting properly?
I said the 27th.
Okay.
It's not a majority of the board.
Well, but it's the majority of what we have here this evening. We have to make decisions, so.
But the board only acts as a majority of four.
Well, I mean, we can play that game if we want, but let's try to move things forward.
I'll capitulate. If there's three for the 27th and you need a fourth vote, I'll go along with the consensus of the...
Thank you.
...the group, despite the fact that I think the 20th is a better day.
Thank you. Okay. What else do we have to decide then in terms of timeline? Anything else this evening?
If...rather than having week 6, taking that whole week to...as a time when you could set a special meeting. If you want to establish...if you want to say that the board's going to do that on September 1st, then you would also be able to, at the end of that meeting, act to sort of...essentially certify your list. And you do have...that is a natural board meeting date. Now, you will have an agenda for that night that includes other things. And this could be a quick process or it could be lengthy, depending on the number of applications you have. I think you're going to have enough that you should dedicate some fairly intensive time to reviewing the applications, particularly if it's the entire board that will be involved in the process.
Okay.
And that's still a decision that you need to make, as well as whether the entire...
We have the flexibility with...it says September 1, day 7. Does that give us the flexibility to do what you're suggesting?
Yes. You could...you can decide this as you get closer and you see how many applicants you have, because that's why I gave it...I specifically included a board meeting date.
Okay.
And we'll leave the 8th as just a possible special board meeting.
Okay.
Mary, is there any reason, for example, if the deadline is the 27th, that the...if the ad hoc committee or the committee of the whole met on September 1st, is a regular board meeting, before the board meeting, right?
That would work.
In the afternoon, it would still be a regular day, and then report up its recommendation to open session that night?
Yes. That could be done.
Can do that.
I have a question.
Sure.
If we have set the 27th as the date, which is the big welcome day and the entire campus community is engaged with that, and we have classes beginning that following Monday, does the administration have the resources necessary to go through and verify all the legal requirements that first week of classes for a possible meeting on September 1st of the committee?
They don't have to wait till...they can do them as they come in, Jeff.
Sure. I'm just asking...I'm asking the administration. And if they say they...
And I'll defer to Dr. Rocha on that question.
They can do it.
Well, I think we could and we would be prepared to have...if they came in on that Friday and to have the applications ready for the committee by September 1st. I think that would be...
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anything else on the timeline then that we have to decide this evening?
No.
Unless...can we take us back then to the issues we do need to decide?
The one issue that I would like the board to determine is whether it is going to...
Be the board of...as acting as maybe the whole or...
Do the screening, acting by appointing an ad hoc board or acting as a committee of the whole. I have a sense that the board prefers to act as a committee of the whole rather than appointing an ad hoc committee. But that, I think, is a decision that you should make.
I agree. The other possibility was what Jeanette suggested, of just have an ad hoc committee that would be a public committee. And then if more board members wanted to attend, they could certainly do it.
But the committee, if it's going to do that...if you're going to do that, you do need to identify the members of the ad hoc committee.
Sure.
Wherever they're going to be.
And I don't object to Dr. Mann's suggestion, if it's long as a public meeting, that other board members can attend.
Mr. Martin, any comments on it?
No, I don't.
Mr. Peck?
I'll be on it.
Okay. And you said we have to select the members now?
I think you should.
I'm available.
For London, I'm available.
Ms. Brown has volunteered.
Now, I mean, another possibility is that the three members will be appointed by the president of the board at some future time. We could just say to be appointed by the president of the board and then you can appoint them.
All appointments by the board president, according to the board's bylaws, has to be approved by the board.
Oh, okay.
So that would not work unless we do it tonight.
Unless you were to suspend that bylaw. Yeah.
Okay. Well, we have one volunteer.
Do you want me to add that the ad hoc committee shall conduct its meetings in public?
Yes, I think that's the...
Well, I'll do it also.
Yeah. So I was going to recommend, too, given that my schedule's kind of fluid right now, and if the board president were willing to serve, that the board president, Dr. Mann, and Ms. Brown...
That's fine with me. And it's public meetings, so if you or Dr. Fellow or Mr. Martin want to attend, Mr. Peck, you're more than welcome to be there. Is that okay, myself, Jeanette, and Ms. Brown?
Now, do you understand that members of the board who attend to watch are there to watch? They wouldn't be able to then join the proceeding.
Well, at the time they could be appointed.
Well, they can participate. They just couldn't vote, right?
Right. They could...they can speak as members of the public, but they couldn't vote.
Sure. Okay.
One last thing.
Yes.
I would hope Mr. Peck participates.
I'm sorry. Is board members...and Mann. There we go.
My hope is Mr. Peck would participate actively in the process.
I was actually just going to ask that. I know...I realize that I don't count for quorum or have an official vote on the board, but I just, as a formality, I would request that I be added to the committee.
Sure. That'd be great.
Absolutely. No, we would encourage that. You represent the students who are going to be probably most affected by this, so we encourage you to do that. So...okay, is it okay then that Dr. Mann, Ms. Brown, and myself are the official committee, but they will be public meetings and anyone can attend and ask questions, et cetera? Okay. Moving on to the next issue we need to address.
I think that pretty much takes care of it. This is a truly technical, and that's it. When you do your interviews, do you want to sit as a committee of the whole? I recommend that to...
Sorry, say what?
When you do the interviews, do you want to sit as a committee of the whole and then rise to become the board again for purposes of taking the vote? It's kind of a parliamentary distinction, but...
What's the pleasure of the board?
What was the question again?
When you do the interviews, do you want to sit as a committee of the whole and then rise to the board?
Right. Would there be any problem just acting as the board, conducting the interviews, and then voting at the end of that?
As long as you don't start taking action.
Oh, we couldn't take action after?
You'd have to rise to go back to being the board. When you're committee of the whole, you're a committee, so you're not taking any action.
Well, why can't we just interview as a board then? That just makes it easier.
You could do that. That's my question to you.
Yeah. Let's just do that, when we won't have to worry about what we can and can't do.
Okay. So we'll take that out.
Do we need a motion...is there...to approve these procedures?
You do. And before you do that, I don't know whether any members of the public wanted to speak to it. I want to be sure that if anybody...
Oh, that's right, too. Thank you for reminding me.
If anybody wanted to speak to it, that they've had an opportunity to do so.
Does anyone in the public wish to address this esoteric conversation we've been having? I don't see anybody rushing to the podium, so I think we're...
Well, before we vote on it, I'd just like to point out that the whole issue of giving the interview questions to the candidates is kind of moot, because first of all, it's going to be on...you know, we're audio cast and we're video cast, so they can just watch this and see it. Mary puts it up very nicely, so...
I'm hoping the auto cast is working. I'm hearing some noise in the PA system, so I hope that we're able to record this appropriately.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Are we ready for a motion?
And will we adopt the procedures as discussed?
I second the motion.
Any further discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Ms. Dahl. We really appreciate your assistance and...
You're very welcome. It is my pleasure. And I'm going to now take down the screen and close off here. You're very welcome, it is my pleasure, and I'm going to now take down the screen and close off here.
While she's doing that, perhaps we could turn to reports, board of trustees, Ms. Brown, any reports?
Um, yes, let's see. This past Saturday, I attended an early intervention community youth participation summit held over at the Flintridge Retreat Center, and it was sponsored by Parent and Youth Advocate Group. It was a quite good summit where we were focusing on troubled youth. Also, on July twenty-second, I attended the first African-American California Community College Justice Summit in Compton, California. This, this, I guess, African-American community trustee entity was established on the thirtieth during the last conference we had down at Long Beach. The focus of the summit was to introduce the best practices for retaining and graduating community college African-American males. And it was a well-rounded summit, and I learned and was able to meet several key, you know, leaders that have an understanding of what to do and how to attempt to help our males or African-Americans. So I hope we will be having more, and it was quite good, that's my report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Baum?
I was expecting, and when Dr. Mann comes back, she'll probably also mention this, but it was a magnificent celebration a couple of weekends ago when the college dedicated the Chihuahua Monument on the campus of the Community Education Center. We had great representation from the board and the community, including our congressman. And it was a, and our new police chief, who was participated in this. Dr. Mann, I'm starting to talk about the Chihuahua Memorial Dedication. And so I was very delighted to be a part of that, and I expect President Rocha might have a word to say about that as well.
Dr. Mann? Any other reports or comments on that?
No.
Um, Dr., Mr. Martin, Mr. Peck?
I attended the Measure P Oversight Committee meeting last week. I got a lot of interesting information about the plans for the new Center for the Arts. It's very exciting how that's coming along, and I look forward to seeing how that develops. Also, I'll be attending the Student Trustee Workshop this coming week in Newport Beach.
Good. I also attended the Measure P Oversight Committee, and it was, I thought, well organized, and we bid farewell to a number of the members of the committee, thanked them for their service, and a very encouraging and uplifting affair. Dr. Rocha?
Yes, thank you, President Thompson. We have a report of superintendent, president, and staff. You will, under the circumstances, not be disappointed perhaps to know that I'm going to strike item one. I spoke with Patrick McCown today, and he was at the Sacramento Airport, and his plane had been canceled. And I had asked Patrick to come to give us an inside report on where the state budget negotiations are or aren't, and to give us a legislative affairs report, and I will ask Patrick to return on the eighteenth. August eighteenth, yeah.
August twenty-fifth.
August twenty-fifth, okay. And next, well, one event that we had this past week, I wanted to thank Vice President Sugimoto for setting up a meeting with Supervisor Antonovich, and I think Trustee Baum and Trustee Thompson were also there. And we had a wonderful lunch for him and presented to him the campaign for the Center for the Arts. And we had excellent discussion with him, and we will, I had a nice note from the supervisor today, and we will return to the supervisor to continue to seek his support, financial and otherwise, for the Center for the Arts. And he was very gracious in wanting to continue that. And actually, also shout out to the, our team, our internal team, our P R team, the videographer, because one of the things that Supervisor Antonovich asked after we made the presentation, he said, well, who do you have do this for you? He thought it was an outside company, and it was us, so, good job, good job, everybody. I have a brief report just to introduce Vice President Jacobs. We've been working real hard, I sent a message today to the college about our fall enrollment, and on the, on one hand, our enrollment is booming, so it's a good thing that people want to come to Pasadena City College and get going here. On the other hand, given budget and other challenges, you know, and talking with Trustee Peck, and I had a meeting with A S O president last week, the one thing that students are saying over and over again is, I can't get my classes. So thanks to Vice President Jacobs' leadership, I think, I thought I saw Dean Sabah back there. They were able to round up for us, and thanks to all the deans and faculty who participated in what I would call an extraordinary session last Friday, to see where we are and to see what we could do in the short term to address the needs of our students for the fall, and then to open up a larger project in terms of what we can do for better class scheduling for our students. So, but very briefly, and I turn over to Vice President Jacobs for a brief summary.
Thank you, President Rocha. Actually, at our meeting, President gave us a challenge and told us about opportunities and got us all excited. He mentioned that he wanted us to increase access and success for more students, and we are for that. Immediately, we got people together and we started dialoguing as to what we could do. We're just going to mention two things, and I'm going to have Dr. Aquadumie to mention one part, and I will mention the other. But we are, it's all good news. Actually, we are in high demand, and we are four weeks from the beginning of the semester, and we are one hundred and three percent enrolled with what we have in terms of our regular schedule. But the other good news is, we have a group of deans and group of students, faculty, as well as staff, and they are working on a solution as to how we can, in spite of that, have more access for students and keeping the finances in a prudent state. So we're looking forward to that. And one of the ways that I'll mention briefly, and then we'll just give you a few numbers, is that we are looking at increasing the limits in some of our classes. And so Dr. Aquadumie will tell you, because it was his brainchild, and so he's going to tell you exactly how we're going to do that. And we proposed it, we have talked to people about it, and we will continue to work on that. The other part that the President mentioned that we are so excited about is that we will have an opportunity to do a little research. And as we do this research, we will be able to enroll more students. And the research will be basically devising cohorts of students, or blocks of courses, that students who don't have anything to take, I mean, you know, new students coming in, it's nothing hardly left for them to enroll in. So we're saying that, and some of them can enroll in the ones that Dr. Aquadumie will talk about, about the limits. But we're looking at around our basic skills devising some cohorts and having students take these remedial or the developmental courses they need, whether it's English or math, but they would have like guidance and other courses so that they will have a load. And we're thinking of, in some cases, splitting the division, splitting the semester so they would take so many for eight weeks and then the next eight weeks. So, and that would be following after the math path that I see Dr. Lynn is here and some of the people from our T L C have been doing over the years. So, deans got excited about that, and the English dean came to me today, and she has worked out two versions of these cohorts that we can have. So we'll tell you more about that later, but we're excited, and we're going to track these cohorts and see how well our students do so. We will be able to really look at this, and as we do the research, it's going to provide more classes for students, our eight to ten thousand students who Stuart says have been through with nothing to take. So we're excited about that. Well, you just mentioned the numbers that we made, how we're doing the limits. Maybe you should use that so we can hear you.
Thank you, Dr. Jacobs.
Sure.
Good evening, honorable trustees, and Mr. President, and ladies and gentlemen. The situation.
For the purpose of our broadcast, would you just please tell us who you are?
Yes, my name is Sabah Al-Qajumi, and I'm the Associate Dean of Enrollment Management on campus.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. The, as we came on board trying to see where, what's happening with the college, we found out about three weeks ago that our enrollment was going at a faster rate than the number of seats that we have available. Two weeks ago, under the direction of Dr. Rocha and Dr. Jacobs, we started to look at the crisis that we're going to be facing, and we certainly are facing a very difficult time today. The college is at one hundred and three percent full, most of our divisions running at above ninety-six percent. The only, the only division that is, that has some space is Health Sciences. So we're impacted, we've only registered twenty-two thousand nine hundred students so far in the credit area. So an action plan was needed, and Dr. Rocha said to us two weeks ago, let's start thinking about this. He met with the deans, with the Enrollment Management Advisory Group. We got working on this, and the plan that we came up with will increase the number of seats available on campus, utilizing the resources that we have, but without increasing the F D Fs. We realized that we're working with a tight budget, but we wanted to make seats available for our students. So what we looked at is, can we take the existing sections within the existing classrooms and make some adjustments to those limits that are, in some cases, way too low? This would create equity between the faculty in terms of their teaching loads, but also it will help us to optimize the utilization of our resources. When we looked at this, we realized that there is a good number of seats available. We shared that with the deans today and with other, with Ed and other individuals, other guests. We wanted to make this plan of action transparent. We wanted to make sure that everyone who is, has a say and has an interest in it informed. So we're not doing anything behind closed doors, we're being totally open. We feel that this will provide seats for many thousands of students that would be coming to our doors soon, and they are bottlenecked right now. The deans have become real champions in taking the lead in this, in the leadership and making those adjustments. So I think we have a plan in place, we're just, it's a, we're hoping that by the end of this week, we'll put those seats into the system, we will announce it to the public, to the community, to our students, so that they all know that there are seats available.
Are there questions?
I do have a question.
Yes.
I applaud you guys for this innovative way of approaching the crisis, because it is a crisis that we're having with all these students that are coming to P C C. We're happy.
Yes.
That people want to be here, but I am concerned about the in-district students. I run for that purpose, because our students are complaining that they don't have classes, cannot get classes.
Right.
Though they live in district. I know earlier in the spring, we had Super Sunday, which was sort of a campaign to promote early enrollment for students that are coming from high school to college.
Yes.
I am hopeful that registration went well, and they are ready to go. But one thing I discovered as I was interacting with students that were not coming from high school, they were returning students. Several of them, some of them would approach me and ask me about their classes, and I naively sent them to register. However, they were told that they did not have priority registration. So, I really, what I'm really trying to say is if returning students from in district do not have priority registration, and we have this large amount of students, I really would like to see that something is done for in-district students, because as quiet as it's kept, we pay the taxes.
Yes.
I think Dr. Wilcox has.
Yes. I may have part of answer for you.
Please.
Some confusion may have been on when saying priority registration. The order that we register students in is we first do the continuing students, get first chance, because, you know, they've already got some classes and they have fewer options what they need in order to finish their degree. Then we turn to all of the new and returning students, you know, returning students being those who've had a gap in their enrollment. And we do separate all of these new returning students into two groups, those who live within the district and those who live outside the district. And those who live within the district get to register first before anybody outside the district. Now, what does sometimes happen is, we assign all these times to the in-district residents. They register, then we start the out-of-district people, and then somebody who lives in the district comes in, and, you know, they've missed their opportunity, their priority opportunity, but they still can then register immediately because their time will have passed. So we do put in-district residents first, when they're new, and returning students. The laws do not allow us for continuing students to give preference based upon their residence of living in the district. So we kind of, we push the law as much as we can. We're legal, but we're real close on it.
Okay, I'm not following you. So basically, what you're telling me is that in-district students, legally, you cannot give them priority?
When, if they are a continuing student, all continuing students have the same kind of priority in terms of residency, there's no distinction. But when they're new and returning, then if they live within the district, they get to register before the students who live outside the district. Because they're technically not a student until they've registered, so we can make that separation at that time.
Okay, I think I still lost you, I'll get you later.
Okay.
I have a question. Are we, are we projected to enroll more students this fall than last fall?
Yes.
So we will have higher levels of enrollment this fall than last fall?
Exactly. Exactly.
And then, and I want to applaud the innovation in the work of the administration to accommodate as many students as possible, because we are all about access and success. But I also have to ask the hard question, how much over cap are we planning to, are we looking at enrolling? How many enrollments would you suggest?
If we compare this coming fall to last fall.
No, but what we're funded for from the state.
I think we're going to be very much within what is, what we're funded for, plus the two or two and a half percent growth. I don't think we're going to be way above in terms of the F D Fs.
Right, because I'm concerned that we are making accommodations for enrollments that, for which we will realize the revenue, because financially, it will be very hard for the district to do that, because with each additional enrollment that we expand enrollments, we're also incurring financial obligations of the faculty when we pay overloads and things like that. And I just want to make sure that we have the resources to accommodate the increased enrollment.
Well, I think what the dean is trying to do, and the deans are trying to do in the short term, is to increase the, what I would call the cost-effectiveness of the current class schedule in the short term to accommodate as many people as possible. It is true, it is absolutely true. It is true, it is absolutely true, that we can't just wildly exceed our apportionment cap and our apportionment funding. The, as I alluded, this is the first step towards a revised model. We would be doing the Ed Master Plan and the Dean is working on a revised model that we'll be bringing to you, you know, in, in due time that will cause us to make some decisions about, about our mission and some priority decisions. So first things first, we're trying to accommodate every human being that we can for fall. While we, we develop a longer-term model, that will, based on the Ed Master Plan, have to say, well, some things come before other things. So, but I, I can assure you that we are, the instructions are to stay within our current dollar base. So.
Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Martin?
Wanted to commend you because obviously more classes has been a theme of mine for, for several years and I appreciate the creative thinking. And just going to float out a warning that I'm sure we're on top of, more students in a given class means you need more textbooks for that class in the bookstore and several other supporting operations-
The parking.
-need to ramp up-
Yes.
-along with it because a big part of student's success-
Yes.
-are these supporting services that allow a student to succeed. It doesn't do any good to finally make it into the class-
Exactly.
-and can't get the textbook and you're lost by test one and drop.
You're, you're absolutely right. And when we discussed the plan this morning, supporting services came into play, you know, the availability of the library, the bookstore, having enough textbooks, parking, facilities for the students, you know, the eating areas and, you know, we even went down to, you know, bathrooms having enough tissue paper. So, we're looking at all the details.
I appreciate hearing that, you're on top of those kinds of issues because that too is a big part of student's success.
Exactly.
But it doesn't do any good if we don't have the classes and so more classes is certainly better.
And, and like Dr. Rocha mentioned, even though we, we're going to try to increase, but we want to increase within reason, we want to be able to make more seats available to our students, but we don't want to, you know, break the bank in the process.
Dr. Mann?
Yes, I, I do have a, I do have a question and a, and a comment. And I know you've been on leave, so this is really addressed more to, I guess, Dr. Jacobs and people who've been here. But the first question and comment is for you. I hope that we are also canceling the low enrollment classes. It's my understanding that many of these classes continue on and that seems to me the second half of putting more students in certain classes is an early cancellation of these low enrollment classes. And the second point I would like to make is, in last November, Chancellor Scott, you know, made this very strong statement, you need to start prioritizing and downscaling your curriculum and focusing on these basic classes. I, I think it's great we're doing it now, but I think we lost several months here.
Yes.
And I don't think we have to wait for the Educational Master Plan to know the guidance that was given to us in our, by the legislature, basic skills transfer and technical and career education. So I hope we can really, really focus on that.
In creating this fall schedules, the Deans were quite aware of transfer, the career and technical courses and the basic skills. So they were given priority as we looked at what would be offered to get our students through. So, and, and even in looking at these cohorts we're talking about, we have students at the top who we need to get out of here and they can't get that last math. So we intend to look at putting a cohort there for the math so they can move, so others can come up. So we are keeping in, in line with that. And I would just like to say, the research part that we're talking about would, we just didn't want to add sections, period, you know, just all over, but we wanted to make them meaningful and to help the students, to prepare them to take other courses. So we are looking into the funds that we talked about, you know, for innovation and we can't think of anything that would be more innovative than what we have proposed. So we are proposing that as research. So it wouldn't be, even though for one year it, our, our FTEs would go up, but it wouldn't be that much because this is a research, we see how it goes and then we would be putting it into our regular program.
Just one other comment I would like to make is at the joint meeting of the Accreditation and the Educational Master Plan Committee, I heard of a high-level administrator of the college say we had page after page after page in this catalog of, of very low enrollment classes. And I hope those are now being, you know, canceled and those faculty are being reassigned.
Actually, now if you look at our classes, we don't have any low enroll, we have one area of music that we might would say now, but that's the only one because they take a little longer with the portfolios and having to addition. But that's why we said 103% enroll, we really don't have any low. But usually, and we had been working on that, where we had low enroll classes, we would wait until the last week and then we would try to, we would close them and sometimes we couldn't add other courses. But that we corrected and we had said we would close all courses at least two weeks before the deadline, before the beginning of the semester, so students could get into other classes. Where we are now, we don't have anything to close.
Okay, that's good news.
Yes.
Yeah, we began to look at the low enrolled classes, Dr. Mann, and, and so far it looks really good. It seems like everything, but we will continue to monitor that, those low enrolled classes. And we are in continual, you know, we're always dialoguing with the Deans that are concerned in this process. So if anything goes down, sometimes it's, it's up and then students, you know, draw up and change, you know, priorities based on more seats being added. So when we see something drop down, we will let the Deans know so they either push it up or they will reassign the faculty and let the students know.
Okay, thank you.
In a timely fashion.
I'm very, I'm very pleased to hear that, all of this.
Thank you. Mr. Pack, do you have any questions or anything you want to add to this conversation?
No, just, just a brief comment to say I'd like to extend my dearest, most sincere thanks to all those involved, to Dr. Rocha for posing this challenge to work within the budget, also to Dr. Jacobs and all the Deans for making this work. That is a struggle that every student has had getting classes, particularly this year. And so I'm, I'm thrilled that I get to report to the associated students when I meet with them next, that we are working on it and that we have a wonderful innovative solution to make accessibility and success a priority. So necessity is indeed the mother of invention, I guess.
Dr. Rocha?
Yeah, I, I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dean and thank you, Vice President. Again, what we want to do in turning to a brief report by Vice President Wilcox, one of the things that's clear in enrollment management, as we've taken a look at it, that the hidden tax on the budget is that we have to fund five sections of classes for every two sections of students we complete, especially at the basic skills level. So one of the things that we will be bringing you is how to save real money, and you were referring to the things that go to retention, where you really save the money and, and provide more seats for students, is on the retention side. And we're working with the Senate and other faculty leaders on doing just that. So we'll be bringing back a, a comprehensive enrollment management plan for you shortly after the faculty return and we can have some, some good conversations with them. I did briefly want to turn to Vice President Wilcox. I had asked him to give the Board just kind of a, a one-sheeter so that as you go around and about, there's a lot of talk about Veterans Affairs and we wanted to be responsive to our veterans and others who ask about this, just to give you kind of a fact sheet on veterans at PCC. So, Vice President.
Thank you, Dr. Rocha. Just while the Board was in closed session, I took the liberty to drop off that one-page fact sheet at each of your chairs, so hopefully you can find it. If not, I've got some extras that could pass over.
I got it.
You know, I certainly don't need to read the sheet to you, but I would like to hit just a couple of the highlights that are of particular interest to various groups. One of the questions that often comes up is how much, in terms of resources, does the college donate or contribute toward serving veterans? And we have one and a half staff that are dedicated to just serving veterans. One is a full-time clerk who is in the admissions office and deals with helping veterans get their benefits and answering their questions. And we have a counselor who has been assigned half-time to serve the veterans. Over the last few months, you periodically have also heard requests or questions about, could we get a Veterans Resource Center? I'm happy to tell you that yes, one is coming. It's going to be in the L Building. It's targeted to be opening the first week of school.
W Building.
I'm sorry, W Building, my error. Yeah, in the W Building. And targeted to open the first week of the fall term. In terms of the kinds of support that we provide for veterans, one of the things that's very important, because it came up as registration priority, that is something the veterans receive. They register before all other students. So we actually start with the veterans first, then go into the continuing students. So they get first chance to look at every course that we have scheduled. We also provide priority counseling for veterans, that if they just show up, when they show up, they just have to make themselves known as a veteran, they're taken in to get counseling at that time and don't have to make an appointment, stand in line. We also, in the nursing programs, if we have qualified veterans, they get preferential admission to the nursing program. And the last thing I'd like to point out is just a little hint for the future, we've just recently submitted a three-year, $400,000 grant to be able to expand our Veterans Center that we're going to be opening this fall. So that gives you a little hint of kind of the resources and the services that are provided in a fact sheet format.
I think what you mean is you submitted the application for the grant.
Correct. Sorry.
I have a question.
Ms. Brown?
Just for my clarification, that center, how big is it? The center? How big is it?
It's about 825 square feet.
825 square feet?
Yeah.
And we have how many, I think you said 725, 775 individuals?
Yeah. In spring of 2010, we had 775 individuals who were a veteran at some time. They do range in age from the early twenties up to pushing 80.
Thank you.
A couple of questions, also just a, a point too. Some of these, it's great to be able to have discussion on these issues. If, some of them we might agendize as discussion issues as opposed to trying to do this all under President's Report, just for, for planning. But I, the one thing that, that struck at me too, the, the Veterans Center that we're applying for, we required a minimum of 400 square feet.
Correct.
Now you found a space double that minimum requirement and that should be a sizable space, so that's terrific.
You're correct.
One of the things that you say is not all veterans are receiving benefits because they may have either exhausted their benefits, the time limit for their use expired, they've chosen not to use their benefits. But I was struck that only 240, 243 out of 775. There is also something I am concerned about, that I expect there's also a portion of them that don't know how to access their benefits. That I, I just want to make sure that we're, we're conducting enough outreach to them if they identify that each, that they're, that we're, we're conducting individual outreach to, to them, but-
As part of the process on the application, there's a question about are they a veteran? And if they mark that, it automatically prints for them a message that says there's a Veterans Office, which is actually located-
I, I, so there's a, there's a form they fill out and there's a computer thing that tells them that.
Correct.
But at the same time, we know, in addition to the computer, when they're doing, going a computer process, it, I just, it would be reassuring to me too, to know that they were also, a, a human being actually made an effort to, 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 to connect with them too. But that's, that's just my personal suggestion as well.
Dr. Mann?
Uh, yes, W Building is, that's the women's gym. Used to be called the women's gym, right?
Correct.
And I understand the men's gym, which we tore down, was the oldest and the most decrepit building in the whole California Community College system. What, what is this space actually like in the women's gym? Is it, maybe Dr. Van Pelt, you can give us an answer to that.
I've turned to Dr. Van Pelt, but at the moment it's in the process of getting remodeled.
Dr. Van Pelt, what will it be like when it's done?
It's going to have two offices, brand-new ceiling, brand-new carpeting. It's essentially what was intended to be a classroom that's now being converted into a Veterans Center.
And is it okay?
It, it'll be very nice.
All right.
I might also add that last Friday, we arranged for a tour of the facility, of taking the President of the Veterans Club, the Counselor, Patty D'Orange Martin for the veterans, and, well, as Cameron White, the gentleman that spoke last week, to take them a tour of the new facilities and seek their input and, and ideas.
Great, that's wonderful. What did they say? Were they, did they think it was going to be adequate space?
Feedback I got is that they were okay with it. They, you know, had some suggestions, they did ask, well, you know, will there be carpet? And the answer was yes and things like that. Would there be handrails? Yes, there would be.
Is it next to the gym? Is there still a gym there? No?
Yes, but it's on the opposite side, the southern side.
So they, they won't have to work with, having to put up with that noise?
No, no.
Okay.
Mr. Pack?
This is a simple question. The existing Veterans Center in the campus center of this building, will that continue to exist once this new center opens or does everything transfer there?
It would make sense to move it there and the, it's really just a room that's dedicated here. So now that we have a much larger space with some private offices in the new facility, it would make sense to move it.
Right, I was just curious. Thank you.
Other questions? Good, thank you very much. Let's now go to the shared governance representatives and reports. Dr. Douglas?
We have no report tonight.
Martinez?
Just very quickly, the Senate has been in attendance at these campus-wide meetings with the President and the administration on these enrollment management issues. And we've also been involved in active consultation on the letter that Dr. Rocha sent out to the faculty on these issues of access. So there, there is an education campaign that has to take place with faculty and I think we are off to a good start with that. And then secondly, I just want to let you know that we continue to work with the Office of Educational Services and Ipro on the formation of the Institutional Effectiveness Committee, including an IEC startup initiative. And I'm sure you'll be hearing more about that in the near future. Thank you.
What is an IEC?
The IEC, the Institutional Effectiveness Committee.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Smith?
Hi. Classified Senate met today and had an election of officers. Gary Potts was elected as the President. Diana Ashkenazi is the Vice President. Julio Huerta, the Parliamentarian, Denise Albright, Secretary, Monica Palacios, the Treasurer, and I was elected as Representative to the Board. We will be scheduling a Classified Senate Retreat to develop new goals and objectives to, in 2010, 11, and those arrangements are yet to be determined.
Good. Thank you very much. Any others? Then let's move on to approval of the minutes from the meeting of July 21st. We have revised minutes, I think have been handed out, some correction-
Approval of the minutes as revised.
Is there a second?
I second the minutes.
The correction appears in item M. Okay. Any questions or comments with respect to revised minutes?
I need to just change one word on page four under my report, that the PCAC was videotaping the Board meeting instead of videoing the Board meeting. Videoing.
Any other comments or corrections? Okay, advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of consent items?
Approval of consent items?
Second.
Any questions or anything to be taken separately? I apologize to this, I do have a question with respect to item 4I. And that simply is, I had trouble understanding, it says expenses not to exceed $12,000 each for a total of $48,000. And then it appears to me we're paying, are we paying $24,000 for Glendale? Is that what we're doing here?
Twenty-four thousand? In terms of the stipends, you're saying 24,000 for, yes, for Glendale? For Glendale, you know, this is that partnership that we have, the grant that we have to-
Do they reimburse us, or are we paying from the grant money for them?
It's collaborative, so it's, they are partners with us. So we're just the fiscal agent, but they have their part of the grant also, so that's what-
We get a check and we write a check to Glendale?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I was just going to comment on 21P. First off is to acknowledge the 21 years of service for our retiring carpenter, Mr. McNeil. And so to convey appreciation of the board for his service to the district. And also a shout-out to our former student trustee, who also worked for the district, Nick Zomit, who I understand is taking a big job with the mayor of the city of Los Angeles. And so we're very proud of Nick.
Any other comments or questions on consent items? Or motion approved?
We've already had the motion.
I beg your pardon. Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. A budget update presentation and discussion.
Yes, none.
Okay.
Van Pelt?
Thank you. After about a month of not much occurring in Sacramento, the legislators are back in session. There is a Democratic plan that is moving its way through. One of the components is a reasonably complex process, where what they're intending to do is to lower the state sales tax, however, raise the income tax levels, and then raise the vehicle taxes, the reason being that taxpayers can then deduct those on their federal taxes, at which point what will occur is to shift some of the load onto the federal government. So that's one of the methods that they intend to use. They estimate that would close $1.8 billion worth of the problem. There's another one, too, which is to suspend Proposition 98. However, in this case, the league and the chancellor's office are in favor of it because through this, again, complex process, they intend to raise $3 billion more than what the governor proposed in his budget. The majority of that money, by far, would go to the K through 12 in order to cover cuts that were previously imposed. There is still strong support for 2.21% growth system-wide, as well as the elimination of the negative COLA. And one of the ways that they do intend to garner Republican support is to address $380 million in accumulated unfunded mandates. An unfunded mandate is something that the state requires us to do, however, they don't provide us the funding to do them. And the idea is to set up a joint powers authority and to be able to borrow against a future revenue stream in order to try to bridge that gap. Typically, if the model would hold, PCC's portion of that would be on the order of $6 or $7 million. There is a great deal of optimism that this at least will form the framework for future agreement on a budget. Now, that has to be tempered with, still, a very soft economy. Unemployment is still 12.4%. State revenues came in significantly above expectations for the year, almost a third of a billion dollars. The median house prices in May were up 6% from April and 23% from May-on-May from the previous year. And the new home permits are up 22% for the first five months of the year compared to the first five months of last year. Bear in mind that, you know, any increase is based on a horrific last year, so, you know, a percentage increase, while it's good, isn't necessarily significant enough to be able to get out of the budget morass. In terms of the budget development on the campus, the total comp model, the guiding principles and the directions, as well as the budget options, have been posted on the PCC website under the Ad Hoc Budget Advisory Committee section. Last time I said that the $16 million of deferred apportionment was in the mail, we did in fact receive that. Now, what that means is that we have enough cash on hand to get us through November. So, you know, hopefully it's not going to take nearly that long. However, we are positioned, as well as we could possibly be positioned, in order to be able to handle the storm. And if I can just touch on the Measure P budget, we did have the quarterly meeting last week. We did go through the budget. The budget is very sound and in order, as we expected it would be. We do have the funds in place to move forward with the Center for the Arts. The capital campaign, of course, goes on, but the capital campaign is intended to cover issues of what they call FFNE furniture fixtures and equipment. But the construction budget has been set aside. We are on Friday doing the job walk. There's extraordinary interest in the project. So far, we have 65 companies that have expressed interest in being at the job walk. Now, we haven't been able to separate those into prime contractors and subcontractors, but nonetheless, 65 contractors is an extraordinary number. We were hoping for 30. So we're already having to scale up. We'll do it in this room because there will be so many people involved. So that's a brief update.
Are there questions of Dr. Van Pelt? Okay, then let's move on to the next item. J, appointment of Measure P Citizens Oversight Committee, discussion with possible action. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, been moved and approved, or moved and seconded.
This is just for the appointment of Mr. King to the committee, correct?
No, it's the appointment of the entire group, as I understand.
The rest of the committee was appointed last-
That's right, they were, didn't we?
It is for Mr. Branford King.
Oh, is that just he? Okay, all right. Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Public hearing regarding bargaining, initial bargaining proposal from the Pasadena City College Faculty Association, the Pasadena Area Community College District, item K. Dr. Rocha, any comments before we open the hearing?
No, we received the proposal and set out a process for the bargaining.
Okay, the public hearing is now open. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to address the board with respect to this No rush to the podium? So we can now declare that the public hearing is closed. What is the action that we're asked to take? Just hold a hearing?
Just close it.
Open and close the hearing.
All right, we have opened and closed the hearing, and I guess we now move on to the next item on the agenda.
Correct.
Okay, back to the agenda here. The academic calendar effect on student success, discussion for approval of staff time with possible action. Mr. Martin is the author of this potential staff item. So do you care to explain it, John?
Well, last time the calendar came up, there was some discussion, and I think there was some comment by some of the deans, if I remember correctly, that were wondering if this new calendar that we're on is really benefiting our students. And the fact that the deans were raising the question, or some of the staff were raising the question, seemed to me it might be worth a look into if we can isolate the variable and find out what is the impact on student success. So I don't know what your feeling is, you're relatively new to that, or if you have had experience with that, where you came from.
Yeah, and I'm relatively old to that, too.
Relatively old to that.
But, well, thank you, trustee Martin, for putting this on the agenda, because what we did today, knowing it was on the agenda, I met with the executive committee to discuss the issue, to see where we are and where we're going. And what I'd like to report is that we would like to be fully responsive. And so I charged research and planning to begin to consult with the deans and to try and get some data. First of all, we need to define what we mean by student success, which we'll do through consultation, and then to have research come up with a very, very kind of brief, common-sense data set, and then to bring back a complete report for you that should be properly folded into this comprehensive enrollment management report. So, you know, we would be happy to discuss it at further length, but I would request more time to prepare the report.
I'm really comfortable with that, that you're on top of that whole process, and would be delighted to give you as much time as you need to get through that.
So we'll be back with you shortly.
Mr. Baum?
So the way we have it phrased here is so that to give the administration the authority, that we agree as a board, so that the administration isn't running to every comment without the benefit of the board's direction. So this is to approve of staff time with possible action. So then I would move approval of the board to direct the administration to explore this, so that you have clear direction that this is what, an area we'd like the administration to focus.
Second.
Okay, move and second, and are there any discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item, board meeting calendar, discussion for approval of staff time with possible action. Mr. Baum?
And I'm going to withdraw that, because we are going to be having a board retreat, and I don't, and I think we'll be discussing policies and procedures of the board at that time, so I don't think it's necessary for us to discuss it and take up staff time with that right now.
Future board meeting dates, August 25th is the next meeting, Saturday, the 28th is the board retreat, and then Wednesday, September 1st is the regular board meeting at 6:00 PM.
Mr. Thompson, I don't think the board has actually approved that August 28th for the board retreat, did we? Didn't we just do that through-
Email.
Email. I think we have to take a formal action to approve it, we also need to approve a time.
A location, probably.
And a location.
Well, I don't, just, do we have to approve the location, or is that just something gets announced?
Well, we have to approve the time, certainly.
Yeah, okay. My recommendation would be we start around 9:30 in the morning. It's a Saturday morning.
Oh, my God.
Is that okay?
Sure.
All right, is there a motion to approve retreat on Saturday, August 28th, starting at 9:30 in the morning, and a place to be announced?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, move and second, advisory vote?
Aye.
Before we vote, I see our council is here. I'd like to find out, do we have to have the place approved before we do this? Ms. Dow?
Dr. Mann, I'm not aware of anything in the law that would require you to have approved the place before you set the date, as you're doing now.
Okay.
It must be identified on the agenda that is posted.
All right, thank you.
So that members of the public are aware of where the meeting's going to occur, when the agenda is posted.
We also have another meeting before then.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And we will announce the place well before the August 25th meeting, so. Future agenda items. Dr. Mann?
Yes, I have a future agenda item. I would like for the board to discuss, in light of all the interest among the public in the compensation for board members and executives, I would like to have the board discuss the posting of the compensation for the board and for our executives. And just for the benefit of those who don't know, the chancellor, apparently, the controller apparently has issued a directive to all city and county governments to post this information, and I think it's something we ought to talk about.
Okay, other thoughts on that? Anybody object to having that be a future agenda item? Dr. Rocha?
Certainly not an objection, but I would say that we definitely should agendize it and proceed with the advice of council on exactly what constitutes proper disclosure and how to do that to make sure it's consistent with also employee rights and laws and rules and regulations. So we'll certainly bring that back.
Future, any other future agenda items?
And I'd like this maybe sooner than, rather than later, because if you look at our list here, we've got future agenda items that have been here on the list for over a year. So I would like, I think this is kind of a timely subject, so I don't want to, I would hate to see this on here next year, that we're still waiting to discuss this.
Okay.
Good suggestion.
Thank you.
Any other future agenda items? Before we adjourn, I just wanted to thank again Mary Dow for being with us this evening, both in the closed session and the open session. Your input, I think, has been extraordinarily valuable, and one thing that we've talked about and which we're going to do more of is have counsel present at our meetings. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. I'm pleased to be here.
Nothing else to come before us? We are adjourned. Thank you.